I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. All rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we're going to do roll call.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Accounted for.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. Do we have any late changes to the agenda? Thank you very much. And so next will be public comment. Do we have any anyone signed up for public comment?
We have Monica Wheaton. If you'll take the podium, you have five minutes to speak. Up there.
Up on the podium.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Monica Wheaton. I'm actually a resident of the... Lynn Wood. I am here today because I want to honor one of your residents here in Mountain Lake Terrace for such a wonderful, amazing contributions that he's done, not only to the city of Mountain Lake Terrace, but to the Edmonds School District. And he is a commissioner here with the Mountain Lake Terrace City Council and has been very involved with the Edmonds School District for the last 17 years, putting on Edmonds Comedy Night. So through Edmonds Comedy Night, many years ago, Mountain Lake Terrace, sorry, Terrace Park Elementary was constructed, and it was constructed without a play shed for the rain. A bunch of PTA members got together and decided they needed to raise money. And so this person, who is a professional comedian, volunteered to put on a show to raise money to get the play shed constructed. That was 17 years ago, and they funded that play shed. And for many years, he contributed through the annual comedy night to Terrace Park Elementary. About five years ago, my group, which is the Parent Leaders Group for the Edmonds School District, we work with the PTAs and Parent Leaders Group across the 35 schools in our district, we took over the show and we started running that. And so I've been a member of the committee for the last seven years, and we continue to do this show, and we sell it out every time. It's two nights in February where we raise money for the Parent Leaders Groups. Each year, we raise about $30,000 that we use for to fund different programs within the school district, parent leaders getting training, educational programs. We've funded after-school buses. We brought the ocean from Edmonds into our schools for about 25 different schools and about 5,000, no, I can't remember how many different kids. But we continue to do a World of Books program where we're adding diverse books into our libraries at our schools. So I really just wanted to highlight this person. Over the course of the time, I would say that we've probably raised close to $500,000 for our school district. And we continue to do this show, which is very great. We have a lot of fun doing it, and we raised a lot of money doing it as well, which is wonderful. It not only benefits our schools and our children and our parent leaders, but also the community as well, because it brings the community together. So this person that I wanted to honor is sitting right back there. So Kermit, will you please come up? Kermit Appio. And if you know Kermit, you know that he loves pie. So I'm not sure how much time I have left, but I wanted to give, honor you with a piece of gift certificate to the pie company. Thank you very much.
Okay. That's it for the in-person. And we do have someone online who's going to speak.
Am I live?
Yes.
Okay. Apparently, I'm not on camera, but thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Virginia Clough, Liberty Lake, Washington, formerly a resident of Mountain Lake Terrace and city employee. I was asked to speak to the proclamation tonight by Vanita Francisco of the DEI Commission. So thanks to her and to William Page Jr. for the opportunity. This proclamation was added to the council's agenda following the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, as many people of Asian and Pacific Islander descent experienced racism or victims of hate crimes. I'm happy to see the work the DEI Commission and City Council are doing to educate the community and eliminate racism. For API Heritage Month, I'd like to recognize some of the outstanding leadership in the Mountain Lake Terrace community from Asian American and Pacific Islander people. There are several members of the API community currently serving on our boards and commissions, including the aforementioned Kermit Appio and Scott Matsuda, who I understand are both there tonight. Kermit performed at our Employee Appreciation Breakfast a few years back and rocked the show. And Scott was one of our go-to photographers for city events and was also chair of the former Community Policing Advisory Board. And he and his wife Jennifer also won an Evergreen Award for their beautiful home. A few of the notable leaders that I recall over the past 20 years include our former late state Senator Paul Shin, current state representative Cindy Ruh, who wanted to be here tonight, but she's in Japan, business owners Takeo and Yuko Kikuchi, Yuko's sister Kumie and the Abe family, and of course, Mayor Kyoko Matsumoto Wright. I remember when Kyoko was appointed to serve as a planning commissioner in 2002, and during her term, the planning commission was instrumental in shaping the current vision. In 2003, the city conducted a transit-oriented development study, and in 2006, that planning commission worked with city staff, council, and community on the original town center plan that was adopted in 2007. I know Mayor Pro Tem Wall was on planning commission, and Councilmember Sonmore was on the council back then. Kyoko San Yoshi was still in school at the time, and he used to volunteer to give dance performances at city events like National Night Out. Late in 2007, there was a vacancy on the city council, and Kyoko was among 11 candidates who threw their hats into the ring. She was ultimately selected in January of 2008, and after serving two years of the vacant term, she's now, I believe, in her fourth full term on city council. Kyoko was selected as Mayor Pro Tem in 2017, and she became mayor in late 2018 after Mayor Smith passed away. She's served as mayor for over five years now. Kyoko is also the city's third female mayor, following Lois Anderson and Pat Cordova. Mountain Lake Terrace has not had a lot of racial diversity on its council over the years, but with the confidence of the community and council behind Kyoko, that's now changing, and her example has helped pave the way. Kyoko is not only a leader in Mountain Lake Terrace, but well beyond our borders in Snohomish County in Washington State, serving on several boards, commissions, and committees. She's at numerous meetings and events each week representing Mountain Lake Terrace and brings back information and opportunities for consideration. She has a strong network of business and legislative officials at the local, state, and federal levels, and although she's short in stature, she stands out with her iconic smile, stylish clothes, and red hair, and sometimes purple. As a city staff member, I appreciated how Kyoko was thoughtful in bringing back swag from conferences for the employees, and how she checked in during the pandemic while city hall was closed, and made a consistent effort to talk to city staff and bring in treats to raise morale. Kyoko was also a good listener in relaying concerns she heard from the community and making sure those were addressed with the city manager and council. Kyoko's kept in touch with me since I left in 2022, and I'm honored to be asked to speak about her dedication and inspiration. She was a woman of Japanese descent, a single mom, and she answered the call to volunteer and roast the challenge of running for public office, eventually becoming mayor of her community. I hope her story will inspire others in Mountain Lake Terrace and beyond. Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the contributions of all of our API residents and business owners, and I was fortunate to meet many who served on our boards and commissions, opened businesses, volunteered at or donated to city events, won Evergreen Awards, and supported the community in many ways. I wish you all the best, and I hope to see you in person tomorrow at Kent Court Match's retirement party. And as a postscript, I still think you're the best city council in the whole state. Thank you very much.
I did not know about that.
The mayor from DEI. Okay. No one else has signed up to speak, and we did not receive any comments via writing.
All right. Thank you. Wow. So next is the consent calendar. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent calendar items A through F.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's been, I can't even think anymore. Okay. Right. It's been adopted. Next is our, very, very special, Proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month with our Deputy City Manager Carolyn Hope. Are we going to?
Scott Matsuda, our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commissioner, is going to read the proclamation tonight. Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome. Mayor Matsumoto Wright, Mayor Pro Tem and Council, thank you very much.
Is that on?
Will you, Della Chen and Georgia Chen and Izzy Gahn join me here? All right. This is the City of Mountain Lake Terrace Proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas the month of May was chosen as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese citizen, Nakahama Manjuro, to the United States on May 7, 1843, but also the anniversary of the May 10, 1869 completion of the first transcontinental railroad built with the backbreaking labor of nearly 20,000 Chinese immigrants. And whereas, according to the United States Census Bureau, more than 11% of Mountain Lake Terrace's population identifies as Asian American and Pacific Islander, including community members who serve as artists, business owners, educators, healthcare professionals, lawyers and judges, clergy, first responders, and military personnel. And whereas, while we celebrate the achievements and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders that enrich our history, society, and culture, we must also acknowledge that structural discrimination, prejudice, and injustice that still manifest in racist attacks on this community. And whereas, today, more than 20 million Asian American Pacific Islanders live in the United States, making America more vibrant, prosperous, and secure. And whereas, the city recognizes that cultural organizations help carry on traditions to younger generations and the broader community to build understanding and foster relationships. Tonight, we recognize the Seattle Chinese Community Girls Drill Team, which was founded by Ruby Chow in 1952 to accomplish those goals and is now led by Izzy Gahn. In addition, we recognize local director Della Chen for her award-winning documentary about the drill team called She Marches in Chinatown. This month, the film be shown at the Mountain Lake Terrace Library in an effort to highlight these amazing women and girls and strengthen our community connections. Now therefore, you, Mayor Matsumoto Wright, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and encourage all residents to learn more about the positive contributions of American, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. Oops.
Did you want to say something before you?
Also, thank you to Kristin Piffo and Ruth Griffin from the Mountain Lake Terrace Library for partnering with us, the Mountain Lake Terrace DEI Commission, on hosting the film.
Thank you so much. This is quite an honor. We're just really excited to get this film out, to share this story with everybody, because it is such an important part of Asian American history, which is part of American history. Our goal, my goal with this film is to get it into Washington State history, into curriculum. We designed this film to be 30 minutes so that it could be paired with a curriculum so that kids, 5th grade, 8th grade, and high school can learn about Asian Americans' history and female-led Asian American community efforts. So thank you so much for including us today. It's an honor. This is Izzy Gahn, who is the director of the drill team.
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for honoring the drill team and for, I mean, it's very humbling and super excited for possibly coming up here to do a parade performance for the community. But I've been doing this for 30 years, and it's just a great honor. It's hard for me to talk. And Della, thank you so much for doing this film, because without her film, I think that a lot of people would not have known the history of the drill team. So thank you.
Yeah. Hopefully, you guys can all see it next Saturday at the Mountain Lake Terrace Library. We're also screening at Shorewood High School on May 28. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to the next proclamation, which is proclamation for the National Police Week. Did I just go ahead and have, so Rick Ryan will be reading this and presenting it to the chief. This is our Chief of Police, Pete Call.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad Chief Call could be with us tonight. Thank you for being here and be an honor to read this proclamation. This is a proclamation for National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States has designated May 9 through the 18th as National Police Week, which includes acknowledgement of police officers and canines who gave their lives in the line of duty or became disabled in the performance of duty. And whereas we are fortunate not to have lost any officers in the line of duty in our city, but across the state, we have lost 319 brave people who dedicated their lives to law enforcement. And whereas the members of the City of Mountain Lake Terrace Police Department play an essential role in protecting the rights and freedoms of Mountain Lake Terrace and provide a vital public service. And whereas, it is important that all community members know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And whereas, members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder. And now therefore, the Mayor Kyoko Matsumoto Wright, on behalf of the Mountain Lake Terrace City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 9 through 18, 2024, as National Police Week, and encouraging community members to participate in local events honoring our police officers. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'll keep my comments short as I normally do, but speaking for the men and women that work in my police department, we really appreciate the recognition. And I'd like to point out, there was a number thrown out here about officers that have given their lives. If you watched the news, there was four additional officers back in Carolina who were killed this week. They were embedded in the U.S. Marshals Violent Offender Task Force. We have a like task force here that hits close to home, because I have a detective embedded in a very similar situation. So the possibility of that happening with those folks is always very high because of what they do. Just wanted to recognize that another tragedy this week that we just experienced. So thank you very much.
Okay. So next is what half this room is here for. And that is the recognition of Kent Court Match, and we're going to welcome Jeff Betts to the podium first.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. I'm Jeff Betts, Recreation and Parks Director for the city. And I get the honor of recognizing one of our own, so I get to stand up here for staff and talk about somebody who works for the city. Well, as of tomorrow, it'll be his last day. We're talking about Kent Court Match. She's the Parks and Property Management Superintendent for the last, well, the last, I don't know, 15 years or so, but he's been with the city for 38 years. So just a few words regarding Kent's service here with the city. So 38 years of public service, started in 1986 as a groundskeeper on the golf course down there at Ballenger. So for the kids that didn't know, that was a golf course before it was a park. But 1989, Kent moved to a full-time parks maintenance position, and then about seven years later, became supervisor of parks. And then in 2007 or so, he became Parks and Property Management Superintendent, adding duties that he probably didn't have time to do at the time, but did not complain and just got things done. So Kent has many accomplishments, and I think most of us would recognize that he's kind of volunteer central from Mountain Lake Terrace. Anybody thinks of volunteerism, they think of Kent. And he took that role on with gusto. It's one of his favorite things to do, as his own admission. We talked about the volunteer event about a week ago, all the things that he's done and accomplished with volunteerism. So along those same lines, special events, really 35 different tree lightings that he's attended, every single tour to Terrace event that the city has held, Ken's been at, every single National Night Out event. So a lot of evenings and weekends that he spent here in Mountain Lake Terrace. So I don't know what you're going to do with all your time after this, but we really appreciate it, you know? And one of the big things Ken did also is he actually was a project manager on the Ballenger Park Master Plan about 10 years ago, when we converted the golf course to a park and went about getting public input on that project. And about the same time is when I became director. And so Ken really helped me, moved me along, you know? And some of those areas that Ken's strong in, I wasn't so strong in. So he really helped me personally and professionally kind of bring me along in those areas. So if you talk to other city staff, what would they say about Ken? You know, Ken is helpful to everybody. He really is. So he has his hands in every department. So one way or another, through Parks and Property Management, and even steps out of those roles at times, doing things that isn't necessarily in his, potentially within his job description, but it's within his wheelhouse as an expert PowerPoint maker. So you will see that if you come tomorrow, you've got a PowerPoint, and also all the breakfasts that we've been to, Ken does those PowerPoints every year, so we've been watching those. So not only is he skilled, but and helpful, but just in general, he's a kind person. He's kind, he's affable. You ask him to do something, and he has a good attitude about it. Couldn't ask for anything more as a supervisor, really. He's just somebody that really wants to go out and get things done, is courteous to the public and his coworkers. I don't know anybody that's said a bad word about Ken. So just a really nice person. So and I think I would just say that, you know, in general, he's just a servant leader. Really, Ken is embodiment of a servant leader and a government servant leader. So he's so busy, actually, he had to split his position into two different positions. So really appreciate, you know, all the years of service you've given to the city, and I'll keep this short and end it now. But tomorrow, we'll be able to recognize him a little bit here as well, and then afterwards tomorrow evening, and that'll be the last day for Ken. Ken, did you want to come up and say something here? Do you want to bring the family up too?
Certificate for you. Okay. That's right. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, and City Manager. That is how I've addressed the council since I became a supervisor 28 years ago. It's the last time I'll say it, and it's the last time you'll hear it. But it's a good thing. Change is good. I'm ready to go. Moving people from the city to the other city hall, and then from the city hall back to this, kind of, that's enough. But I have thoroughly enjoyed my time working for the, for the city of Mountain Lake Terrace. The council, the staff, the community overall have welcomed me and made me part of the community. And I don't know what else really more to say, but as I look at some of these folks out here, I know almost everybody that's here, and I've met most of the people that are probably watching, their staff, and there is people on the community that were watching. If you can make it tomorrow, it'd be wonderful to see you all. It's going to be a big family reunion. So thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you, City Manager. And thanks, Jeff.
All right, everybody ready? Make sure you take a step forward. Everyone has stepped forward. All righty, more beautiful. All right, everybody keep looking at me. Hold steady. Very nice. Can you get a little closer? Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to confirm, it's 2 to 4 tomorrow?
2 to 4 tomorrow, yes.
And whoever, I'll start or doesn't matter. Do you want me to start? Okay. Bear with me here if I can read my own writing. "Ken, I've had the pleasure of working with you for over 24 years, and I admire and respect how you've been a part of our Park Services and Property Manager Superintendent. You have overseen our most precious and cherished part of our city. You have uplifted our city's image. It is an extremely emotional day because you're retiring. Your years of..." Your years of service to the city of Mountain Lake Terrace have truly benefited our city. Your career is something to be proud of. It has been a significant journey. Over the course, over the course, you have dedicated your career has been, there has been many career achievements. I'll get through this, sorry. I'm choking up here. And some of those career achievements are, and just to name just a couple, the new acquisition to expand Terrace Park Creek, the off-leash dog park, many, 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 park cleanups, overseeing Eagle Scouts and Girl Scout projects, Ballenger Park, Uvasa Park, removal of lily pads, I think we did one year, or you did, new playground equipment, as we saw last week over at Mountain Lake Terrace, yeah, Forest Ridge, thank you. And I was just thinking when you said that we got the equipment on sale. It was a proud moment, you know? And that was very nice of you to do that. But over the years, you've seen a lot of the equipment come and go and wear out. And I was looking at all our parks, and you've been instrumental in all of those. And one of my favorite parks that I go to a couple of times a week is Bicentennial Park. And so you saw the demolition of the cabin and created the whole trail around the park, and the removal of the fire engine, and then putting the playground equipment back. And then also Fire Station Park next to Briar. You saw the removal of the station and then redoing that park. And along with Earth Day, new trails, redesign of Bicentennial Park that I just mentioned. And of course, Ballenger Park, we can't go without saying, and I know Jeff already mentioned a lot of that, but the projects to help the ecosystem restoration, the design of Ballenger Park and dealing with the flooding there and at the dam. And then the Playground USA Award that we received, thanks to you. And then all the support, especially to the park and a rec board over the years. It's been instrumental. And then just Jeff brought up, one of my favorite things that you've done for the city over all these years is the photo montage. But the music that goes with it, you could just feel it in your heart. Every time you attended one of those employee breakfasts, it just kind of bonded us all closer together. And I thank you for that. So just in closing, I'm wishing you nothing but the best in your retirement with your wife and your daughter. And I remember meeting your daughter when she was like this big. And I still have a picture of you with your long, dark hair. And congratulations on your amazing career. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Sonmore, for giving us such a good overview. And it clears up space in my brain. So I appreciate that very much. Ken, thank you. Oh, we're back. All right. The universe is going to let me speak. All right. Ken, thank you. So I started off my service to the city on the NPIS. So our Neighborhood Parks Improvement Subcommittee, where Ken was our fearless city connection. And he is just such an incredible, I guess, entry point for folks into the city. Like you're, the way that you care about the work that you do and our community and that you welcome people in and help to acquaint them and orient them with, you know, our community and the work that we do. And I think just the way that you approach it, you know, it helps to bring people in and help them to feel connected to our community. And you absolutely did that for me. And I am just incredibly grateful for the time that I got to spend with you there, as well as all of the work that you have done and all of the impact that you have made to so many other folks in our community. I think I'll leave it there. But I appreciate you very much. I will forever miss park tours because I don't think anyone is capable of giving a park tour quite like Ken. He takes, you know, folks on a tour of all of our parks and has, he's just this incredible reservoir of knowledge about our community. And so we will miss that very much. But I'm super excited for you and happy for you and your family and all of the things that you're going to get to do now that you have some more time in your life. So we hope you come back and visit. You are absolutely a part of our community. I hope you don't just feel like you are. You are a part of this community. And, you know, you've made an impact here, you know, that will go on. So thank you.
Okay, Rory, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, Ken, a lot of things have been said, so I won't repeat them. But thank you. And I think I know far fewer people around town and here in the city family, if not for you and all the volunteer events that you've put on. I think you're one of the first city staff I met. And I really appreciate you on a personal level for helping me understand the city and the work of the city. And I hope you have some happy trails and quality time with your family.
All right, Rick.
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I'll be doing more speaking tomorrow. So I'm going to keep it kind of short. When I moved into the city in 85, let's see, you started 89? 86, okay. Every time I did something, you were there. I mean, I joined the garden club. And then if we wanted to complain to anyone, we'd complain to you. Yeah, see, he knows. Then later on, I got involved with the arts and the art shows. There was Ken. Volunteer in the park, volunteers, there was Ken. And all those cleanups and I could go on and on and on. I've even driven by and you're out there messing around with that fountain. He's everywhere. Anyway, thank you very much and have a great retirement.
Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I really just want to take a moment to go on record with my genuine reaction, with Ken already knows it, when I learned that Ken was retiring. And I do want to racialize this as most as possible, which is take in whatever you think of me, whatever you know of me, whatever you've heard of me, mix it all together. Some of it's probably true, some of it probably isn't. But just know that whatever your opinion is of me, when I learned that Ken was retiring, he happened to walk through the building at the same time. And I got up and went and asked him to get off the phone. And I think I freaked him out a little bit, actually, because he was sitting and I said, I need you to stand up. I think he thought I was going to throw blows or something because I was definitely intense. And I cried. I don't think I can give a better depiction of a friendship than that. I even went so far as to tell him, and I'm telling you all now on public record, that my understanding of the city is that council and staff can't actually be friends. But if that wasn't in place, he is my definition of a friend and someone that I would have wanted to call an actual friend. So your retirement, to me, is actually an opportunity, even though it's a huge loss to this city. But selfishly speaking, as a resident of 20 years, thank you for all you have done. My kids have grown up appreciating this city, not because of their parents, but because of what this city can offer. And to know that a lot of this, as you've been hearing, ties back to you is why those tears were there. So thank you for your work. Thank you for loaning us, your husband and father. I can only imagine how many hours he took away from you all to dedicate to this city. But I hope you all receive that back tomorrow if you haven't been receiving it all along. So with that, thank you for your service, sir. Smokey Bear salutes you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ken, what are we going to do without you? You know, this is actually my 25th year of serving the city. And it started, of course, you know, on the Planning Commission. So when I stepped into this role on the city council, you know, I had a lot of, a lot of great background on a lot of different things and a lot of different areas. And I felt very comfortable stepping into the city council. But I didn't have as much background on Parks and Recreation. Although I know that we, you came and gave presentations with Dawn and then Jeff to the Planning Commission and gave us a good handle on Parks and Recreation. But I always felt comfortable knowing both, you know, Dawn's leadership, now Jeff's leadership, and your involvement. Knowing that our Parks and Recreation programs were in good hands and safe and comfortable and a place that we can, we as a community can be proud of. And you've made that happen over, you know, and given us confidence that we have a great program and will have continued to have a great program here at Mountain Lake Terrace. It's been good hands. And you've single-handedly kept it together and from falling apart. I honestly don't think the two positions are going to fill your role. I know how much time and effort and energy and everything dedication you've given and put into this city. And it is deeply appreciated on behalf of the council, staff, the community, everybody that's made this a place to call home. And for that matter, coming from Shoreline and growing up in Shoreline and using the Mountain Lake Terrace Pool and Recreation Pavilion, can say that the entire region appreciates what you've done over the years, for 38 years now. And I don't know why you didn't want to make it just another couple of years, make it 40. And just in case you do want to feel like, if you let him come back, you are always welcome here in Mountain Lake Terrace in any capacity. We appreciate everything you've done to build us up to be what we are. And a very proud part of our community is our Parks and Recreation Program. And you've made that happen. Thank you.
All right. I'm making mine really, really short because tomorrow is two hours of things. But I first met Ken when my son was going to do a Eagle Scout project. And I kept telling my son, we should do something in Mountain Lake Terrace. But he went to Camp Cuckumanga, so he wanted to do something in Lindell Park. And I thought, no, let's do something in Mountain Lake Terrace. So we, somehow, we met with Ken. And you had a whole stack of projects in line. And so we ended up at Terrace Creek Park. But I can't believe that years later, we're working together in different ways and so forth and really got to know each other. So I'm really glad. And, you know, this is not a very big city. But you don't get to meet everybody. And I don't, you don't usually get to meet staff people unless you have to. But I'm so glad that I, you know, have met and know Ken. And I just don't know what we're going to do with that pavilion without Ken. So anyways, we're going to build a new one. We don't want to make this to the point where Ken is just going to say, well, you know, I can't leave. Because you're going to leave. You're going to retire. But anyways, you know that you're very, very much loved. So and you're going to probably hear it 10 times more tomorrow, 100 times more. All right, anyone else before we move on to the next subject? We have, we have people in the audience. Do we want, are you all going to be by again tomorrow? Okay. We're not going to spend any more time tonight then. Okay, so we're going to move on. Going to move on to the public hearing and the vote on the ordinance amending property annexation and zoning map.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Pizzo. I'm an associate planner here at Mountain Lake Terrace. And today I'll be going over the proposed annexation for 4713 240th Street Southwest. The purpose of this agenda item tonight is to go over the annexation and zoning ordinance and to hold the public hearing related to the annexation of this property, provide Planning Commission's recommendation, the results of the Boundary Review Board. And council will have an opportunity to vote on the proposed ordinances. So I'll start with some background information, quickly review the annexation process, provide the Planning Commission recommendation, Boundary Review Board, provide some analysis, staff recommendation, and next steps. All right, so the property in question is located just north of 240th Street Southwest and east of 48th Avenue West. It is currently an unincorporated property in Snohomish County, and it is .43 acres. The reason the property owners would like to annex into the city is to receive city sewer services. On February 8th, the council reached an agreement with the property owners to provide sewer services with the condition of annexing within six months. And on the right is an image of a survey done of the property and the annexation area proposed. So the annexation process was initiated by the property owners and involved city council, Snohomish County, the Planning Commission. And it's now before you all for a vote and a public hearing. I do want to make a note on Resolutions 870 and 889. These were approved earlier on in the annexation process, but had incorrect acreage. And so they have been updated and are in your materials for signatures to show the .43 acres. So Planning Commission's recommendation for the zoning of this property is RS 8400. Reasons for that are because the, first of all, the comprehensive plan designates this property as urban low residential. And so the zoning that is associated with that designation is one of the single household residential zones. And because this lot meets and well exceeds the minimum lot area for RS 8400, which is 8,400 square feet, this was the most appropriate zoning designation. And it is surrounded by similar zones. And so staff made that recommendation to Planning Commission. And Planning Commission recommends that to council. And this is an image of our zoning map with a call-up box showing the property closer up with that proposed zoning designation. Right on March 20th, the Boundary Review Board, at their meeting, waived the review of the annexation, which is something they can do for annexation areas that are less than 10 acres in size and less than $2 million in assessed valuation. And there's a Snohomish County logo on the left side of this slide. All right, some analysis. So the comprehensive plan states that city sewer and water cannot be provided to unincorporated areas unless there's a no protest agreement. This property and annexation area is within the city's municipal urban growth area and is designated as an area of potential annexation in the comprehensive plan. Planning Commission recommends the zoning designation of RS 8400. The municipal code requires an annexation ordinance and a zoning ordinance adopted separately. And a condition of that agreement from February 8th is that the property is annexed within six months. And we are within that timeframe. So staff recommends the approval of the annexation and the zoning ordinances for 4713 240th Street Southwest following today's public hearing. And the next steps include voting on the ordinances. And then if approved, they're sent to the county, office of financial management, and city departments. And we welcome the property owners into the city. And we welcome the property owners into the city. And now we have time for discussion and questions.
Did we want to do questions before we open the public hearing?
So you can move to open the public hearing, have questions, hear any feedback from the, the community and then close and, and make your decision.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to open the public hearing.
It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. Do we have any, excuse me, written comments submitted?
We do not. No one has signed up. There's no comments.
And there's no, no one's signed up here tonight? And no one's pre-registered? And, all right, council, do you have any questions? Oh, wow. All right. Then we'll move on to Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to close the public hearing.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Okay. So Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to adopt the ordinance to, I'm sorry, annexed property located at 4713 240th Street Southwest and the associated zoning ordinance.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. We don't need to have a discussion, do we? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Then we're going to move on to the review and vote on the amendment number three to the Sound Transit Staffing Reimbursement Agreement with Jesse Hoffman.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam and council, thank you for having me. It's kind of hard to top what has gone on here this evening, but I am here to bring you money, so that's something. All right. So what I have before you is Amendment Three to the Sound Transit Permit and Project Review Reimbursement Agreement. The original permit and project review reimbursement agreement had a not-to-exceed amount of $903,586. What this does is it pays for services that we utilize in order to handle the development of the train station, light rail train station and the trackway through Mount Lake Terrace. Consultants, our own time permitting fees, that's what Amendment One of that agreement did, was rolled all of those costs underneath the reimbursement agreement from Sound Transit. There have been two amendments since that time, and this is the third. The last amendment brought the not-to-exceed amount to $3,125,232. Amendment Three to this agreement raises the not-to-exceed limit by $453,000, $453,800, bringing the contract total to $3,579,032. There is an additional contingency, as shown in Exhibit A3 of this agreement, in the amount of $45,380. We don't think that this will cover the full agreement. This was, this was done in, in haste in order to get the agreement in place. We do believe there'll be another one. It looks like it'll project out to about August if our numbers are right. It kind of varies month to month. So the city's purchasing policy states that contracts over 75,000 must be approved by city council. We're recommending that if you have, would like to do so, the council votes in this meeting to approve the city manager to sign this, let me get the exact wording right. We recommend the city council vote to authorize the city manager to approve Amendment Three to the Permit and Project Review Reimbursement Agreement with Sound Transit.
Okay.
Can I answer any questions?
Any questions before we? Okay. Wow. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to authorize the city manager to execute Amendment Number Three to the Permit and Project Review Reimbursement Agreement with Sound Transit.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
And, well, you're not next. We have Jeff Betts next. Review, the next item on our agenda is a review and vote on resolutions to accept the grant with WashDOT and Sound Transit for Veterans Memorial Park Trails Project.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam and council members. I'm Don El Diao, Parks Project Manager. Tonight, we have, we are bringing to you a review and vote on three individual resolutions so we can obligate funds to support the construction of the trails at Veterans Memorial Park. We have multiple funding sources supporting the construction phase. We have monies from Puget Sound Regional Council, Sound Transit and the Federal Highway Administration. We'll go through a little bit of background, talk about the location of the project, give a little project description, talk about grant funding, the schedule and the request of council tonight. Initially, the Veterans Memorial Park property was purchased in 1960 and was slowly added on to become approximately 8.3 acres that it is today. It's a densely wooded area with a playground, a gazebo and currently one paved pathway in the upper loop, but a lot of dirt trails and pathways through the woods as well. The original master plan was developed in 1984. Since then, an update was completed in 2021 with the development of the light, the latest recreation and open space parks plan. And that's what we're working off of today. The location is immediately south of this building. You can access it actually through one of the trails right next to the police station. It's in the heart of the town center. Again, it's about 8.3 acres of dense woods and has some park amenities as well. So the parks, the project at Veterans Memorial Park, so as a part of a transit project, we're improving the dirt trails, pathways connecting from 60th, 58th, the civic campus and making connection down to the transit center. We're going to pave those pathways, make them accessible and provide illumination as well and do some minor frontage improvements on 58th and 234th intersection. So to talk about the funds that we have to support the project, one of the funds that we have is from Sound Transit. We have a funding award of $500,000 to dedicate towards our construction phase. This is part of the System Access Fund that was awarded, I believe, in 2021. So this is one of the funds that we're looking to seek approval to accept the funds so that we can move forward with obligation. The second fund that we have supporting construction at Vets is from the Federal Highways Administration. These are known as demo funds or earmarks. Federal funding, an award of $2 million that is also going towards the construction phase. This fund is also supporting the pedestrian plaza that will be constructed at a future date out at 236 and Vanrye Boulevard. The third piece to the funding for Veterans Memorial Trail is from the Puget Sound Regional Council through the Transportation Alternatives Program. We were awarded initially 117, or sorry, $1,117,000. They recently added to that and we are accepting an award of 1.526725, again to support construction phase of the pedestrian access to the transit center and we're looking to obligate this So this is a schedule breakdown. We are looking to obligate this month and comes, and move straight into bid advertisement and construction here this summer. Tonight, staff is recommending that we review and vote to approve the attack, or the three resolutions before you to accept monies from Sound Transit, the Puget Sound Regional Council as well as the Federal Highways Administration to support construction at Veterans Memorial And so with that, I'll take any questions.
Do we have any questions? Amazing. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the resolution and authorize the city manager to execute the funding agreement in the form substantially similar to Exhibit A attached herein, here too, with Sound Transit to support construction of the Veterans Memorial Park Trails Project.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we move on to the next one, which is the review and, oh, no, we don't. Go ahead, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the resolution and authorize the city manager to execute the Transportation Alternatives Program funding agreement in a form substantially similar to Exhibit B attached here too with WashDOT to support construction of the Veterans Memorial Park Trails Project.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One more. Move to approve the resolution and authorize the city manager to execute a federal highway administration funding agreement in form substantially similar to Exhibit B here too attached with WashDOT to support construction of the Veterans Memorial Park Trails Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. I am on a different page than you are.
We're good.
Under bill? That's where I am now. Under memo? Where are you on that? Okay. That's where I was. Okay. We're just doing the three funds. Okay. So now we're going to move on to the review and vote on contract with, I'm in the right place. Review to vote on contract with King County Directors Associations with, and Musco Sports Lighting LLC for field lighting at Evergreen Play Field Number Five. Okay.
And good evening again, Mayor. Mayor Protam and council members. I'm Jeff Betts, Recreation and Parks Director. And we are here to, to review and vote on the contract for KCDA or King County Directors Association for that Musco Sports Lighting Evergreen Play Field Number Five. The project goal is simple, is to install LED lighting at the Evergreen Play Field Number Five field, which is located just adjacent to the dog park and just north of the Recreation Pavilion at 5303 228th Street Southwest. It's also our furthest southeast field in the Evergreen Play Field complex. So current lighting at Evergreen Play Field Number Five are metal halide fixtures from the mid 1990s and they're the kind that actually have ballast and when they're going out, you know it. From a little ways away, you can hear that buzzing sound. That's the ballast that has gone. So LED light fixtures do not have ballast. So there's a much less maintenance involved with this more modern LED fixture. So also major issues with the current system is the lift that we have to obtain and rent to actually get up and repair the current light systems, which is about $5,000 each time that we do it, not including time and materials for the electrician to repair whatever is wrong. Additionally, the scope of this project is pretty straightforward. There's only one galvanized steel pole with the foundation that needs to be installed and that would be in essentially what would be considered center field for that ball field, but closest to the Terrace Park Playground. So basically the midfield of the entire grass area, but on the south side of that. So that's just to add additional lighting to the center field area of the field, which currently is underlit. So the other poles, existing poles, would just get new pole top assemblies, luminaire assemblies that are really energy efficient LED lights. We would also get remote lighting capability, which we do not have on that field, so it could be turned on or off from anywhere really in the world that there's internet connection. So the, this light system also has a 25-year maintenance guarantee. So 100% of all maintenance costs are covered by warranty. So anything that happens with a bulb or any wiring would be covered by that guarantee. So the King County Directors Association or KCDA, it's a purchasing cooperative that's utilized by many municipalities and school districts in the region. The city is currently a member and we did utilize this process for Evergreen Play Field Number One's lighting. The advantages of purchasing through this cooperative include it's an already vetted contractor and it's also just, the contract's been pre-bid. So that entire bid process has been done for the city in that fashion. So Musco Sports Lighting is one of the largest field lighting vendors in the world and the system is called Light Structure System Total Light Control. As mentioned, it can be controlled remotely. There's really a ton of flexibility in what we can schedule. We can dim it, we can do 100% lighting, we can control one light versus all of them. Much more flexible than the older systems and the lighting costs will be reduced considerably as well. It's at least half, 50% savings from the typical metal light halides. And then also the, the light spillage is dramatically different. When I say light spillage, it's just what you see when you're looking, driving the freeway. You can see a field lit up from a ways away. Sometimes you can really tell when it's an older light system versus a newer one. The, the newer light systems can directionally control the light and keep it on the field of play and not spill that into the neighborhoods and kind of add to that, the issue that can happen with older systems. So the funding for this project includes a Washington State Recreation Conservation Office, youth athletic facilities grant for $350,000 or essentially it'll be 50% of the project costs. So this is, looks like at this point, it is going to be cheaper than we estimated it to be because we're retrofitting existing poles. But it's estimated that grant would probably be reduced to around $206,000 just based on it can't exceed 50% of the project. The other 50% would be budgeted parks capital project funds. And the, these park capital project funds that are already in the budget and obtained were specifically derived from street vacation fees that the council approved a few years ago. So it'd be definitely being put to very good use. The contract amount to be approved tonight with KCDA and Musco is $343,828. But just to highlight the total project cost to exceed that dollar amount, this council action is just to approve the contract. But just to highlight that there will also be permit fees, preliminary site investigation and of course taxes and contingency, and that's estimated to be around $412,000 for a total project cost all in. So staff recommendation for the project is for the city council to award the contract to Musco Sports Lighting LLC through the King County Directors Association for $343,828. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions or comments? Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to award the contract to Musco Sports Lightning, Lighting LLC to install LED sports field lighting at Evergreen Play Field Number Five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next is the review and vote on the proposal to modify ordinance for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission with our, is it going to be Carolyn?
Yes.
Hope? All right. Our assistant deputy, deputy city manager, Carolyn Hope.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for having me tonight. I would like to bring to you a proposal from the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission who are really anxious to fill their seventh seat, which has been vacant for the past year. And since we're in open recruitment and we've been hearing from the council and the commissioners themselves about the need to engage with youth more, they are proposing that we actually update the ordinance. Although it doesn't prohibit any age from joining the commission, they would like to dedicate a seat to a youth who is in high school and is a resident of Mount Lake Terrace and to change the term for that one seat to be up to two years, seeing as high school students may not be living... students may not be living in town for as long as some of our adults. So that's their proposal. We have a markup of the ordinance in your packet for you to look, and we, due to the timeliness of recruitment, which is going on right now, the commission is asking for your vote on this this evening.
All right. Mayor Protem. We have to ask questions. Anybody? You have any comments or questions? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I just need a couple more words, then I can't find a seventh adult, because I still would love to see a youth commission, so I don't want to see us accidentally spin this out. So can somebody just put some words around more than we just can't find a seventh adult? Then that's why we want this youth for this particular commission, especially if it doesn't change anything. I just heard you say there's no age requirement, so dedicating a space to a youth, wouldn't that actually exclude someone who's not a youth? So there is a exclusion move here, so I just want to make sure that it isn't just we can't get that seventh seat filled.
Yeah, I don't think it's about not being able to fill the seat, and I'm not sure I wasn't here when you filled the seat last year, so I'm not exactly sure if there weren't enough candidates or not, but yeah, I'm sorry, I think another council member has something to add.
Go ahead.
Mayor, can I weigh in? Thank you. No, the so the the commission ultimately decided not to fill the last vacant seat because they wanted we didn't have enough applicants when we went through the process this last time. They didn't want to just put somebody into that role who wasn't passionate about stepping into that role, and so they really thought that the work that they were going to do over the course of this last year in terms of the strategic planning process and working with the consultants that we had identified and budgeted for, that like they decided to intentionally wait. I don't think there is any concern from the commission's perspective nor from my perspective that we could fill that with an adult, and I think they very intentionally want to name that we don't have youth applying to our commissions because I don't think youth recognize or see themselves in them, and so they really wanted to intentionally call out the opportunity in a way that makes space and continues to make space for that perspective to be represented, which is not currently represented on any of our commissions. So that was that was the goal behind that, and I think they would be open to the idea of seeing how it goes this this time and, you know, learning from that and continuing to, you know, look at how we we continue to build more inclusive commissions, but they really wanted to, you know, they see a lot of value in hearing from our youth and felt like if we said and dedicated the role to a young person, that we would then have to go out and make sure that we are reaching that audience and making space for them.
Anyone else? Okay, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt an ordinance that updates the language in the municipal code sections 2.150.010 and 2.150.020A to reserve a seat on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission for a high school student.
Second. So it's been moved and seconded. Excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, all right, so we can move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council. A couple notes for you this evening. First, I did want to mention that we issued or sent out communications to the community this morning about the or this afternoon, I think, about the construction activity on 66th, and next week, there'll be a shift, and much of the intersection at 216th and 66th will be closed during that period of construction. There are, I want to make sure I get this right here, only southbound travel in turns will be possible, north and eastbound travel will be blocked, so I just wanted to communicate that as much as we possibly can, maybe ease a little bit of the frustration involved with that that construction activity. See here, the Mount Lake Terrace History Exhibit that we put together for the Edmonds Historical Museum will be opening up later this month, and that exhibit will be coming back to the Mount Lake Terrace Library in October in advance of our 70th anniversary celebration, so we're looking forward to that. And I'm having trouble reading my writing. Oh, we did fill the two positions, one for the code compliance position that we have, so that individual was selected from an internal group of candidates and started yesterday, and the new facility supervisor, one of the two positions that are taking over from Ken, was also an internal promotion. I think that's important to highlight, that we build our staff capacity that we have and encourage people to take the next steps in their career. Also, and last, well, second to last, the NPIS did donate a tree to Ken at his last meeting the other night, and that tree will be placed right out front here out of City Hall, and I'm looking forward to seeing that. For the boards and commission recruitment that we have ongoing right now, we have four open positions and five applications, but we usually don't get very many until right before the deadline. So the deadline's the end of this month. Like to encourage anybody that is interested in participating in the city to apply. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the city manager? Mayor Protem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the spirit of informing the community what opportunities there are to volunteer, can you list off the commissions and boards and commissions that we're looking for volunteers for?
I can't, but I can get you that information and make sure I have it for you the next time we meet, and we can also publicize that again on our social media channels and on our website.
Mention the Planning Commission?
Well, there is so the opportunities, and I don't know where the openings are, so there's only four, but we have Planning Commission, we have the Arts Commission, we have the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission, the LFS board, we have Salary Commission Opportunities, which is something that comes up once every five years, and that looks at the compensation for members of council. So
And RPAC.
Yeah, and RPAC, along with NPIS, which is a subcommittee, but still.
Anyone else? Okay. Oh, all righty. All right, so now we're going to go on to the council liaison reports. We can start over there with Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. Luckily, I looked and saw how far back it's been since we have talked about these. I'll try to be brief, given that, but I don't think we've had a meeting, a regular meeting in a month. So going back to early April, on the 6th, we hosted here in our council chambers, the 32nd District's Legislative Town Hall. We had Representative Davis and Senator Solomon here, and I had the opportunity to moderate the conversation. We had, I mean, a full house and lots of questions for them, and they did a good job trying to get to all of those, so appreciated not only to have space to host them, but how many folks from the community turned out. The 11th, I had my city manager meeting, and then we had our Children's Day reception and and meeting slash work session, and it was amazing to have so many young folks here in this space and just excited about all of the ways that we are engaging and and taking into consideration the young people in our community, and thank particularly our DEIC for all of their work and putting that together, as well as our deputy city manager. On the 16th, we had the Veterans Park Upper Plateau Design Meeting here. It is awesome to see that continuing to come along, and again, appreciate all of staff's work, particularly in looking at community engagement. On the 17th, we had our DEI Commission Meeting. You know, we just voted on one of the, I think, key takeaways from there, so I won't I won't spend too much time on that, but they continue to do really, really good work and are plugging away with all of the the items on their to-do list. On the 18th, I attended one of those things, our DEI training here with city staff, which was awesome. It was nice to have that space over in the police station in the training room to host that, and I thought that the training was was great. Then we also had that afternoon, the Neighborhood Center, the Linwood Neighborhood Center groundbreaking, which was a really amazing and inspirational, you know, opportunity to envision, you know, the the forward progress that that project has made, as well as what is to come. They took us on a we got Rick Steves took us on a virtual tour of what we can envision once the building is built, and it was very, very cool. And then we headed up to Everett, or I headed up to Everett, to the Snohomish County Cities Meeting, where we got together with colleagues from cities around Snohomish County and got to learn all sorts of good stuff about budgets, or as good as budget stuff gets. The 19th, it's been a lot, we've had a lot going on. The 19th, we had a ribbon cutting at Terrace Ridge Park, which was super exciting. It's always nice to see, you know, new playground equipment and other park amenities come into service, and it was really, really neat. We had the opportunity to see a family who I knew come and show up as we were finishing up, and their kids were playing on the the playground, and I just, you know, again, I think there we are doing so many positive things, and it's really neat to see that in action. The 20th was our Arbor Day cleanup. We had lots of folks here, again, making a difference and volunteering in our community. I then headed down to the Seattle Center and attended the International Children's Friendship Festival that I had a chance to see one of our DEI commissioners down there, who was really the driver of bringing the Children's Day proclamation here, and so had a chance to meet some of the organizers there who are interested in looking at opportunities for for bringing the the things that they do around the Children's International Friendship Festival to places around the the greater Seattle area. So had a good initial conversation there, and then came back for our volunteer appreciation event, and just really, I'm grateful for all of the people in our community who show up, and I think it was really interesting. I think what I reflected on as we were sitting here and looking at all of the folks in the room was just we had volunteers who have been volunteering in this community for 30 years and, you know, beyond, and we also had folks who, you know, have only moved to the community, you know, within the last year or two, and have kind of jumped right in, and it was just neat to see, I think, so many different people in our community coming together to give back and make it a better place. We had our work session on the 25th. We had our retreat on the 27th, which was amazing and a really good opportunity to connect, and I'll let other folks talk more about that, you know, but I thought it was a good foundational kind of body of work as we move forward as a council and as a city together. The 30th, we had the Briar Terrace Chamber of Commerce here again in council chambers to get an update on our economic development strategic plan, and got to hear lots of really interesting and good feedback from our business community about how both the Chamber of Commerce and we as a city can support them and and their ideas for how we can continue to encourage economic development and vibrancy in our community. And then the first, yesterday, I had a chance to City Club had their civic cocktail, and they had a really great representation for Snohomish County. They were talking about mental health as we kicked off Mental Health Awareness Month, and we had Representative Davis, our representative here in the 32nd District, was one of their panelists, as was this the Chief Advancement Officer for Compass Health. We had Richard Taylor, who I think folks have seen around, he's an Edmonds resident who gives really powerful inspirational keynote speeches, and actually had a member of Volunteers of Western Washington, who I think her name was Mia, and she is part of the she's part of the the crisis care line specifically that has been built for our native community to be able to connect with other folks who other native folks who who are there to support them if they are going through crisis. And so it was really, it was really powerful. I saw that they posted online today, would encourage folks to take the opportunity to watch it and to think about, you know, your own mental health, you know, the, you know, how how connection, I think, impacts one another and the things that we can do to support one another, because I think that is super important, and I thought they did a good job of naming that. So I think that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be short on the long list we have going here. On the 9th, I attended our LFS One Retirement Board. This is in April. And then on the 10th, we had a town hall with Senator Solomon and House Representative Davis in the evening. And 11th, we had a work session with the Children's Day proclamation and the children's choir. Then the 16th, I had Arts Commission meeting, and then I stopped by to look at the Parks and Recreation Presentation in chambers here for parks. And then on the 18th, I attended the Trinity Lutheran Linwood Neighborhood Center groundbreaking. And then that evening, we had Snohomish County Cities and Towns Networking Meeting. And then on the 20th, Saturday was Arbor Day, I met with our Arbor Day volunteer during their thank you and lunch. And then that evening, well, afternoon, we had our volunteer appreciation here at City Hall, and then our retreat on the 27th, and thank you, everyone that worked so hard for that to make it come about. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'll be very redundant here, so I'm going to go in reverse order. Last night, I also attended the the Mount Lake Terrace Briar Chamber of Commerce Strategic --
I'm in the Mount Lake Terrace Chamber of Commerce. No more Briar.
Okay. Mount Lake Terrace Chamber of Commerce Strategic Visioning Workshop. Didn't stick around for all that, but was really pleased with the turnout. And also attended the AHA meeting, the acronym I always mix up.
Alliance for Housing Affordability.
Oh, the Snohomish County Alliance for Housing Affordability Meeting, thank you. And and quickly wanted to highlight some of the the conversation there. I think the most important topic that was discussed with their staff, Chris Collier, who, you know, works with with our staff and and our some of our commissions quite closely, relates to the potential for AHA and Chris helping the city of Mount Lake Terrace with with compliance work for affordable housing that that might be built with our our tax incentive program. And while the while the AHA board didn't necessarily vote to to stand that program up at this meeting, there was interest from from the the group, and especially those cities, you know, including Mount Lake Terrace, Edmonds, Linwood, Everett, and, you know, potentially others will be adding, will be adopting some similar ordinances here in the future. So just want to put that on our radar. And also, I also attended our our council retreat last Saturday. I really enjoyed the the chance to to meet and discuss the the sort of year ahead with you all and and our our leadership staff. Prior to that, I also attended the Arbor Day Cleanup. Well, it went to our work session that week. Also enjoyed pulling pulling weeds, as it were, on our Arbor Day Cleanup and the volunteer appreciation event that followed it. On the 18th, I also attended the Snohomish County Cities Dinner and the groundbreaking for the Linwood Neighborhood Center, which will be, I guess it's hard to sort of understate the importance of of that building and the services that will be found there for for all of those those of us who live here in southwest Snohomish County. And I'll I'll go as far back as, I think, April 5th, because I missed a meeting, I was excused from a meeting in in April, attended the Ballenger Forum meeting with our Stormwater Czar Laura Reed, and really enjoyed the the presentation during that meeting from some fish scientists about fish scientists about sort of historic fish populations in, in our greater watershed that, that is, that, you know, the, the streams, wetlands, lakes, rivers that feed into the, the north part of Lake Washington and the, the, you know, all of the historic sort of, sort of terraforming we've done in the colonial age and the impacts it's had on fish populations and, and the, the work that, that will be, and the importance of the work that we do in, you know, keeping our storm water as cool as possible and as well as removing the, the barriers to the, the free flow of, of water to Lake Washington and to the Puget Sound. So all, all that to say, you know, there, there were some more sort of bureaucratic elements to the meeting, but I think it's important for us as a, the city and as a staff and community to think of, of the opportunity as we remove fish barriers and restore habitat in our Lake Ballenger and, and our creeks, but, but also our, you know, think about our stormwater drains, all the nutrient and pollution that flows into those, those, you know, great, on the street really do our, our environment a disservice if, if they aren't as clean as, as possible. So was really pleased that the, that group had a chance to have that time with, with, you know, local fish scientists who was at, who was based out of, I believe U-Dub Bothell, not Cascadia, but, and all, and my liaison report right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. So I too was not present for the April 4th meeting, so I haven't had to wear a suit or be behind this desk for a month. So that's my way of saying it. My report actually goes back into March. Nobody panic. That said, I did the math, I have at least 18 items that I would report on and I don't want to do my clerk like that, so I already emailed that to her. And just know that if I added in my work stuff, it would have shot up well over that. So I'm just going to do a couple of highlights that I didn't already hear, but for the most part, if there was something in common between us, I was there with them. So the things that I did on my own dating back to March the 23rd was I had the opportunity to emcee the first annual 5K for the food bank in Everett. I bring that up here just to say that it'd be interesting to see what we're doing down here for our food bank in terms of just raising funds for them. That's not a question I have asked in the past and wondered if that's something our city council can think about. So just putting that in motion as a, something to think about. Only other piece I want to add that ties back to Mount Lake Terrace that happened in March is I also had the opportunity to attend the Snohomish County Prayer Breakfast on the 29th. I bring that up because I had the honor of meeting Dr. Hammer's family, which most of us are going, who on earth is Dr. Hammer? Maybe folks over here know who that is, but that was one of our Mount Lake Terrace mayors. And I heard that there's a historical display being created on Mount Lake Terrace and just know that you can learn about the Hammer family through that process because his descendants, his family have contributed to that, but it was just awesome to be in that space and to meet part of our history. If I move into April really quickly and just give two highlights, I'll give them on the same day, which is on the 26th, last Friday, I had the opportunity to, I think that was my third time, emcee, co- emcee the Leadership Snohomish County, who we invest in, Leadership Snohomish County Economic Alliance folks, their, is that right? Economic Alliance? No, not Economic Alliance, Leadership Snohomish County, separate entities. Their Step Up Conference, Racial Equity Conference. Just an honor to do that. The last year, we actually did it out of this site. This year, we did it out of CWU on the Edmonds College campus, but just a wonderful opportunity to highlight our campus, our city and for those who were participating, I believe there were some DEI folks there, I believe some of you might have participated, but just to say thank you for participating in that. And then the second, which happened on that same day, but actually took place over the course of three days, and I'll bring that up real quickly in new business when we get there, is we had a Rampathon take place here and I'll just hold that steady to say I'll bring that up in the next one and I'll just end my report there.
Thank you. Councilmember Salmore.
Thank you. I'll keep mine brief since you all did a very good job at the details. Attended Left One where we reviewed the claims, Children's Day, but I just have to tell you a really quick story about Children's Day and I just had a blast. The children from Brighton are extremely bright and talented and I was talking to one fourth grader and she was telling me jokes and I thought, you're a fourth grader? I said, you're a little comedian. I said, what do they call a comedian woman? She goes, a comedian hen. And I'm thinking, this is a fourth grader? And she, they are very extremely bright. And then the, the young adults from Mount Lake Terrace High School are wonderful and then the four thoughts of Briar Terrace, the two girls that attended that talked about recycling and safe routes to school. I was very impressed with them. And then attended the town meeting and the ribbon cutting where I appreciate where Ken saved us money. He got the $18,000 new equipment on sale, so that was a win. Normally it would cost about $24,000 with installation, but we did our own installation, so I appreciate that. Council retreat, the finance board, we reviewed the expenditures and one of the expenditures is the new logo on the podium and so that looks very, very nice. And then Park and Rec, and we also have a Park and Rec Advisory Board member in the audience, Forrest. Reda is here today and I thank him for his service in the Park and Rec. Our last meeting, we talked about Veterans Memorial Park Upper Plateau, letter of support, Evergreen Playground, complex plans, our 2024 work plan review, our tree board update. And then we had two disc golf players that came in and told us about some of the issues with the disc golf and that will probably be coming to you later. And then last but not least, again, thank you Ken Courtmatch for all your service to the city of Mount Lake Terrace. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Mayor Pretam Wal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so going back to our work session on April 11th, we had our, celebrate our Children's Day and reviewed issues approved on tonight's consent agenda, some of those issues, I think. Going back a little ways, I did want to highlight, especially considering what we just changed on the DEI, I should have brought it, brought it up during Children's Day when we had some of our high school students there. And I'm going to start making it a mission of mine to raise the topic of the need to update our world history books, which are severely out of date, do not cover the world's history, but rather the Western Hemisphere, Western, Western history mostly and how it came to America. But there is a great, big, amazing world out there with an amazing history that I sure have a passion for and would love to see us spending a little more time teaching how we got to where we are truly today in, in the world, in, in our country and in this region. I'll stop there for now, but you'll probably be hearing me raise that topic again and looking forward to working with our DEI and our new student commissioner on that issue moving forward. Let's see, on the 16th, we had the Veterans Park Upper Plateau Open House. Also had on the 16th, the DEI Training Session. On the 18th, we had the Snohomish County Cities Networking Session and talked about budgets and financing, had a great session with, with Mike Bailey. I thought one of the best sessions actually we've really had in a long time with the Snohomish County Cities. I was sorry to have missed, I'm sorry that you stepped out, but sorry to have missed the Linwood Neighborhood Center groundbreaking because I was actually taking my mother to the doctor then, so I was not available for that, which I'm sure that the Neighborhood Center would agree that that was probably a higher priority. But I do look forward to the grand opening because I, as has been mentioned, we can't underscore the importance of the Neighborhood Center and what it's going to do for servicing, services for this community. I think a very important topic that I'll be raising at next week's council president's meeting is how important it is for us to be working as a region together and coordinating with our services that we're delivering to our community because we can't do it on our own. But this is a tremendous program that has been put in place that really look forward to emulating in a lot of other ways and working together to be able to help serve the South County region, whether it's mental health services, other social services, dealing with homelessness, affordable housing issues, climate issues. There's just a lot of opportunity, I think, for us to be working together as a region and addressing a lot of these through, through working together with other governments as well as service providers to help serve our community. Steve, sorry you missed that. I was just mentioning that I'm sorry I missed the Linwood Services Neighborhood Center's grand, groundbreaking session, but looked forward to the, because of my, taking my mother to the doctor, so I was not available, but I think it is a tremendous program. Looking forward to celebrating the grand opening. So moving on to the 24th, had a Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee meeting where we had a briefing on inclusionary zoning and how Snohomish County is targeting, is incorporating that in and targeting it into municipal urban core areas in the next update. There's a lot of discussion about pros and cons and looking forward to, a lot of, a lot of us are anxiously awaiting how that turns out because there are some concerns. There's, again, there's a lot of pros and cons to inclusionary zoning and so if they do adopt that in Snohomish County, I think a lot of us will be watching that for results and see how that plays out. HASCO also gave a review of programs available to help affordable housing needs in our community and I really did a great job talking about the number of different areas where we all can be utilizing their services and our, our residents can be utilizing their services for things like rebate programs for, for rent and whatnot. There's just, again, a lot of services that HASCO has available to help with affordable housing issues. There are also a number of concerns voiced about, from several cities, about meeting their growth targets. And so it's going to be interesting to see how that plays out over the next few years really because particularly right now in, in adopting our, in updating our comprehensive plans, there seems to be a lot of pushback from our neighbors about, about having to adopt more housing in their communities. And so we can certainly appreciate that concern, but the challenge is of course, how do we, how do we address our, our housing needs and, and growing population in this area without, anyway, it's just, it is, it is a challenge, there is a concern. I think we should be proud of what we're doing here in Mount Lake Terrace to address those challenges head on. And it'll be interesting to see what our neighbors end up doing as they go forward in, in addressing the, the growth targets coming up and, and what kind of pushback they, they do as far as even talking about wanting to move the line. So, interesting. All right. So then on the 25th, had the Puget Sound Regional Council Operations Committee and talked about budget and recommended the budget for, that we'll be seeing at the General Assembly on May 30th. On the 25th, also on the 25th, had the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board Meeting to talk about some of our budget, again, that we'll be adopting on the General Assembly on the May 30th. Also had, talked about the Climate Commitment Act and had a briefing on that. Federal Legislative Update, a general, again, the General Assembly from 10 to 1 on May 30th. And applications are open, just one more reminder for, applications are open for Summer Planning Academy for high school students interested in planning. The deadline is May 15th. So if any high school students out there are interested in planning and how cities become what we, what we are today and where we're going in the future, this is a great opportunity for you. Encourage you to apply for that by May 15th. On the 25th, we had our work session and reviewed issues again that we approved on tonight's consent agenda. Met with the economic, our economic development consultants on May 30th, followed by the meeting with the Mount Lake Terrace Chamber of Commerce that, where we reviewed with our consultants, Mount Lake Terrace Economic Development Strategy and got the feedback from our businesses in our community, which was a great opportunity to hear and listen to them and what their thoughts and ideas are for moving forward. On the 1st of May, had the Snohomish County Tomorrow's Executive Committee meeting where we talked about our operations and programs and topics for the next, next meeting and also the updated budget. We're going to be having to increase the budget, of course, as usual, to address the Snohomish County Tomorrow needs. So that'll be coming before us again at the, well, at the Steering Committee in, at the, let's see, that'll be the May meeting and then official adoption in the summer. And then also talked about, let's see, for your calendars, the, the, our annual assembly for the Snohomish County Tomorrow is going to be December 11th, so around 6:00 PM and probably in the Everett area, we'll be having the General Assembly for Snohomish County Tomorrow. Then yesterday I had the, I chaired the Vision Awards Committee for, that was yesterday, right? Yeah. So Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision Awards, 2050 Vision Awards Committee and we had three different categories, planning ahead, on the ground and working together. Had some really great applications. I've already shared some of them with the city manager of, of other communities and some of the great programs that they've got going on, including our own sound, Linwood next door with a great affordable housing project that they're doing. And, let's see, Community Transit has a great program. Was really excited to see them put in there for, for planning ahead and for the ZIP program that they've got. So it's just, there are, again, a lot of nominations, a lot of the great programs out there that look forward to sharing with the entire region and encourage the region to be looking at, at some of the examples that we have throughout the region and look forward to emulating in, in, in other areas around the Puget Sound Region. With that, I guess we had our meeting with the mayor and city manager and I earlier today and I think that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You won one of those vision awards from PSRC some time ago. You said you met with our economic development companies?
Consultants.
So what does that entail? Because I guess maybe I don't even know about that.
Those are the consultants. Remember back in February, they came and presented to us on the council and they were available on Tuesday for us to, any of us to meet with them.
I thought you were like on a committee or?
Yeah, no, no, this is, this is our consultants that we're contracting with, that we've heard from and, yeah, no, they were just out in, in the area talking with us. We had all had an opportunity to, to talk with them individually as well as meet, they were also, that's those same consultants were the ones that gave the presentation to the Mount Lake Terrace Chamber of Commerce later that evening. Yep.
Okay. So it's my turn and I'm going to go back to April 5th. I attended the Seashore Transportation Forum and that was an in-person meeting, the first in-person meeting that we had since the pandemic. And it was great. It was really, you know, nice to see a lot of the people in person. On the 9th of April, I attended by Zoom, the Snow 911. We, every two years, we vote for our reps and so every two years I sign on and vote. And so I was there for that. And on the 10th, the Herald wanted to do a story about Mount Lake Terrace and do a walking tour, so the city manager and I took a walk with them and the article that they put out was really a great article about our vision and everything for Town Center. And that evening, I attended the 32nd District Legislative District Town Hall with Senators Solomon and Representative Davis. On the 17th, I attended the Mount Lake Terrace DEI Training and I am really, really proud that our city is, is doing this because not all the cities are doing it and some cities don't even think there's a need. So I'm really proud of our city. On the 18th, I attended the ribbon cutting for, or the groundbreaking for the Linwood Neighborhood Center and cannot wait for that to open. And then that, right after that, we all went to the Snohomish County Citizen Towns, which had the speaker on budget, which I thought would be the most boring speech in the world and it turned out to be fantastic. He made the budget seem understandable and funny sometimes and just, I stayed awake. And then on the 19th, I attended the ribbon cutting for the Terrace Creek Park, which others have already talked about. And the Mount Lake Terrace on the 20th, that Saturday, the volunteer appreciation, which others have all talked about too. And then on the 22nd, I attended the Snohomish County Mayor's Meeting and that is on Zoom because it's all Snohomish County and we get about half the cities attending and we just share great ideas on that one. On the 24th, I attended the Edmund School District Student Leadership Conference over at the Edmund Center for Arts. They wanted to They wanted to have speakers from the three cities. So I was the only one from Mount Lake Terrace, but there were two from Edmunds and one from Linwood, talking about leadership in, in the cities. And there are a lot of students. It was all breakout sessions, but boy, there were a lot of students. And I, when, when you go to something like that, you just really have faith in the future because they're smart. Those students are, are smart and they're our future. And then on the 27th, I also attended the council retreat. And on the 29th, I attended the Conservation Futures Meeting. And, pardon?
Just forgot to mention the council retreat.
Oh, you forgot to mention the, well, you were there.
I was there.
The Conservation Futures is, is a, well, you collect the money on your property taxes. And then the county buys open, open space and, and so forth. And they, they were thinking about, we spent a lot of money giving money out. And we, we are now, you know, don't have as much anymore. And so they were considering skipping a year, and I didn't want to skip a year. So, so the small projects can probably get funded this time. So hopefully we'll get some in. I hope you're listening, Mr. Betts. And then on the 30th, I also attended the Mount Lake Terrace Chamber here at Mount Lake Terrace City Hall. And it was very interesting to hear the needs and wants of our business community. So it was an eye opener and I really, really hope that we reach out to other people again. And then yesterday, I attended the South Snohomish County Mayor's. There's only eight of us. And so five of us met at Diamond Knot because it was hosted by, the whole city this time was Mount Lake Terrace. And when, when you have five mayors talking and then we're all right next door to each other, it's Edmunds, Linwood, Mount Lake Terrace, and Breyer, and Mill Creek. The subject matter is, there's just a lot of, lot of things going on and we just get along so well. And we just, we share ideas, we answer questions and so forth. And we all have the same problems, too. It's not just one city having problems.
It's just deal with them better than others.
And then this afternoon, I attended the Community Transit Meeting, Board Meeting. And we saw the, it's not called Zip Cars in Darrington, Arlington, and Lake Stevens, but that's the next group of cities that are getting that service. And it's, it's going to just, it's just going to make everything so much easier for those cities. And I just can't, and then the Lake Stevens map is all around the lake and that's bigger than the city of Mount Lake Terrace. So I'm thinking, wow, if you can do all of Lake Stevens, you can do all of Mount Lake Terrace next when we, when you start getting it south of Linwood. And that's the end of my report. Okay, that was a long one because it was over a month for a lot of us. Yes. And we had a lot of meetings to go to. All right, so next is new business. Does anyone have anything for new business? Councilmember Woodard?
That was sexy. Excuse me. So first, let me apologize. You were by yourself. I have it on good authority that your seatmate backed out at the last minute because he had work for the youth. So I'm glad you were there for the, the youth event that you were just talking about. You said you were the only one from Mount Lake Terrace there. I was like, yeah, because it's, your seatmate left you hanging, that's why. I got called into the office. Yeah, I got called into the office. All good. Switching gears, new business, technically business that's already happened. I referenced it in my very truncated report of what I've been doing. And I want to pause and just say, congratulations to the Bowserini family, residents of Mount Lake Terrace. They're down at the Young Mobile Home Park, just down the street from us. I'm going to quote Joyce specifically. "You have given us our life back." Now, what did she lose in that process to get it back? That is our way of saying thank you to Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish Counties. They have what's called a Rampathon. If you listened to our retreat, you heard a little bit about that, but I'm going to presume you didn't. So to share just a little bit about them, which is basically, they look for families that are in need. And in this particular case, it was around mobility. So what they ended up doing was creating a brand new ramp so that the Bowserini family can leave their home. Without going too deep into their life, just know that they have been housebound for well over four to five months, just literally not being able to leave because of four steps. Four steps, everybody. Count them, one, two, three, four. Kept you in your home for pretty much almost half a year. From Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish Counties, they specifically worked with Exalt Services, a great organization. Thank you, gentlemen. And then they had volunteers from Capital Benefit Services and Sound Capital Loans who came in and really flushed it out, which is just to say they did this, believe it or not, in basically 48 hours. They would have been completely done, but of course, we live in, underneath the convergent zone, which is to say if anytime you're dealing with concrete, there's weather permitting. And so there's a little bit that they still needed to get done. But if you get a chance to go and visit, it's an absolute worth your time. And we, again, just wanted to make sure that we paused and said, thank you for choosing one of our Mount Lake Terrace residents and giving them their family back. And the one story I will share is that it's bigger than just this family. They're just awesome people, they're givers. They've been dedicating their lives to service. But there was a hidden piece of this story that came out in talking with them, which I shared with the council back on Saturday, which is, it wasn't just the two that were impacted. Their family was impacted. They have a 95-year-old grandfather that they had been taking care of that she hadn't been able to go see. So just even in that act, you're making a much bigger impact than just that ramp. But I'm glad they have signage out. And the real takeaway here is Joyce, who's the reason they did this, her plan after her hip surgeries is to get well enough to actually give back and donate and help someone else get their ramp, which if, you know, ever needed a sign of true giving, there it is right there. Grateful for what she has. Her new motivation is to get better so she can help give somebody else that same level of freedom. Wonderful program, Rampathon. If you can't understand me, that's on you. But nonetheless, Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish Counties, thank you all for such a wonderful program and again, for choosing a Mount Lake Terrace resident.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, quickly, in the, in news related to those community members here in Mount Lake Terrace and in our neighboring cities, there is a forum being organized by, or in Linwood that will relate to manufactured home, mobile home park residents. These folks own their own homes, but not the land underneath them. And thankfully, our, our city has avoided the scourge of, of entities, business entities coming in and buying property where these mobile homes sit and making that, that land rent unaffordable. Linwood and many of our neighboring municipalities have many mobile home parks and they represent true affordable housing for, for those communities. And there's, there are real risks of displacement. I think, I think you all saw at our Legislative Town Hall, some of those folks who came out here. Anyway, just want to say that there'll be a forum held in Linwood, Linwood on May 30th, hosted at homage. And there'll be state representatives and, and other folks there to have a panel discussion about how to protect, you know, mobile home park residents that I think will be an important event. Wanted to get it on your radar. And then secondly, you know, we've been talking about sort of regional approaches. And, you know, at our retreat, we, we particularly spent some time with Chief Caw discussing the likely loss of one of, of our embedded social worker. Had a chance to talk to other city council members around the South Snoomish County region. I think there, there is a real need and opportunity to figure out what a, what a, referring to my notes, what a regional crisis response agency might look like. There are models in King County that the county puts money into down there and, and other opportunities to really, you know, use our, our resources collectively to respond to those in, in crisis. And, and also hopefully, you know, retain the services of, of our embedded social workers who might be out of a job if that compass dynamic or that, that reduction in force at, at Compass continues to impact our ability to provide social work to, to those in need, those in crisis here, here in Mount Lake Terrace and our neighboring cities. So just want to plug that for, for us as we engage in the region and, and for staff where the opportunity presents itself.
Mayor Pretend Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate you bringing that up. And I kind of touched on it during my report, but I, we have our council president's meeting on next Tuesday with South County folks. And I'm going to be raising that topic and starting, starting the discussion amongst us about an official body to start reviewing possibilities and opportunities for us working together to address that and many other needs here in the, here in the region. Thank you.
So for mobile home parks, ours are zoned mobile home parks and can't be sold to anybody unless they come to us for a comp change, zoning change. But they can, the new owners can up that cost of space rent to the, to the point where it sometimes becomes unaffordable. The other thing that can be done is to condominiumize each lot so that the people who own the mobile home will then own the land underneath it. And Hasko tried to do that with one, but it didn't, it didn't work out because you have to have the buy-in on everybody. And, and you have to have the finances and so forth. So, but it is a way. And so I haven't heard a lot of people talking about that other, other part because it's been done before. And I read about it in other, other states too, recently been done. So before, you know, for, for the forum and everything, you know, I hope that somebody from Hasko is going to be there because they have rescued so many mobile homes. And I wish that they would have rescued Royal Wood, too. Because that's the problem one right now. And I never thought that Royal Wood would ever get sold. But it did, and now it's, it's a problem. So anyways, unfortunately, 15 years with Hasko, I learned a lot about mobile home parks. All right, anyone else? Okay, if there is nothing else, we're going to adjourn. Thank you.